Oh, Arlene's taking the...
Yes, yes.
She's got the hammer.
He's making me earn my money this morning. At this time, we will call the City Council meeting for March 7th to order. At this time, if we will stand for the pleasure allegiance and invocation by Second Ward Council Member Freddie Dancy.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lord. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather together, we thank you for your endless goodness to us. Thank you for all the skills and talent you have given us and for everyone who is part of this beautiful city and team. We pray that you would provide us with great wisdom, insight, as we discuss our work plans and make decisions about the future. We open our hearts to you now and invite you, your Holy Spirit, to be present among us. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would take the role, please.
Mayor Daniel Mahoney. Vice Mayor Arlene Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Freddie Dancy.
Present.
Councilmember Angelita Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Laura Dryer Schlechtie.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Benel.
Here.
Councilmember Will Forgrave.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item, we are down to item four, the adoption of the agenda for March 7th, 2023.
Sum of support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Are there any additions, changes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will take the vote. Thank you. Now, we will, uh...
It's not showing up for me.
Oh. There we go. It's asking me again. Okay, I can't see that far. Do I re... Six yays, no nays. We'll move on to the next item. Item number five, presentations and proclamations. We do not have any of those tonight. So, we can go on to number six, public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the first public hearing. It's a transition to even year elections for city official offices. Conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' input on transitioning citywide elections from odd years to even years.
Support. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to open the public hearing. At this time, are there any... Oh, sorry, got to vote. Public hearing passes six to zero. Okay, at this time, do we have anyone that would like to speak to transitioning to even year elections?
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I just want to speak in favor of this proposition. I believe that it will increase voter turnout, and that gives a better idea of what the people of the city of Jackson really want in terms of, for instance, electing a mayor, electing the city council members. I think anything we can do to increase voter turnout is a good idea, and this is probably the single most important change that we could make that would increase our elector turnout. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight on this public hearing? Seeing none. At this time, I'll entertain the motion to close the public hearing for even year elections.
Sum of support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments?
Can we make a motion to put it... Do we just adopt it, or do we put it on a ballot?
It's gonna come up at the next meeting for...
For resident.
Got it, okay.
The motion passes six to zero. Now, we'll move on to public hearing. Item number 6.2, conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the city home ARP draft allocation plan. At this time, we do have one public hearing.
Do we... Do you want a motion to open?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to open the public hearing. And before I invite... Motion passes six to zero. I will finish. This is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments on the city's home investment partnership program, American Rescue Funds, Rescue Plan, Home ARP Draft Allocation Plan. At this time, I will call up the one request for Toby Berry.
Thank you. I'm Toby Berry. I'm the CEO of Community Action Agency. We're at 1214 Greenwood Avenue. I want to give our general support of the Home ARP Allocation Plan. I think any opportunity that we have to preserve or create additional affordable housing units goes a long way in addressing housing gaps that we have in this community. The one recommendation that I do have is to increase the supportive service dollar amount to better serve those who are homeless, experiencing homelessness, or who are at risk of homelessness in order to better serve that population. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. We do have an additional request from William Hastings.
Good evening. So, concerning the city's attempt, the city's desire, interest to get 1.1 million dollars from the federal government for a homeless policy, I'd like to begin by saying that trust, trust is a very important word. Trust is an extremely important bond. What, for instance, what is a state of a marriage where trust is lacking? What is the significance when you cannot or do not trust your own employer? What is the significance when your employer cannot or will not trust you? It's pretty big stuff. So, the reason I bring this up is I think there's a fundamental lack of trust with this body and with city council. The reason is your current homelessness project with Residents in Action. Residents in Action was one of three entities that submitted bids to spend, spend, spend this homeless money. They presented the highest bid, not the lowest, the highest bid. They got it. They are not a registered nonprofit. People have been bringing up this, this specific issue, this specific concern. Meeting after meeting, there's been no satisfactory response. Residents in Action consists of, and I've, you know, I've been attended, you know, dropped in on community groups of various kinds over the years from time to time. It consists of all three people. Residents in Action, the participants in that, or at least some of the participants in that, are connected personally and politically to the people who serve and work for the city. It's just a big happy club. So, fundamentally, fundamentally, I think there's a lack of trust. There's a lack of vision. I don't think we need 1.1 million dollars to be spent in such a way that friends, friends of friends of people on city council, on city committees can be personal financial beneficiaries. I mean, imagine saying, "I'm a citizen activist. I'm gonna work to help, I'm gonna work to help the homeless problem in Jackson, and you can pay me $125." What's that little high five, low five? That's really nice. That's really great. From a nonprofit organization that isn't registered anywhere. Oh, I'd also note that on your paperwork, your proposal, you have something called a consultation timetable, and you talk about all the meetings that all the people had about homeless policy running from 9/21 to February of '23. That's about 18 months. Numerous, numerous contacts, 16 different entities. You know who's not mentioned one time in all those contacts over 18 months, all those entities? You know who isn't mentioned one time in this proposal of federal government? Residents in Action. Imagine my surprise. Imagine my surprise. So, just you guys, just keep in mind that ARPA is federal money, and if you misuse it, if there's misprision, if there's misrepresentation, if there's any kind of fraud, that's a federal crime. So, no. I'm a big no on entrusting further funds to this body. It's, you know, one white elephant project over another, be it the test kitchen, be it proposed, what is it, community co-op grocery. It's, you know, and you can't fill potholes. $300,000 for diversity, DEI, you can't fill potholes. Big no, big no on a million dollars for you guys for so-called homeless policy.
John C. King.
I'm John King 203, Third Street here in the city. One thing that I wondered was, this said notified, the C was notified September 21st, 2021, that they're eligible for this. Why is it that it's now that this is being done, there was the, at least 720,000 that could have gone into other things except, you know, besides housing like this. You know, we could have gotten another of the pieces of equipment, you know, the claw bucket thing and some dump trucks, and, you know, that would help with the mess of trees. And yet, you know, here this appears now, and it's limited where the previous funds were spent, where it had much more flexibility. So, why, that would be a question I would want to know, is why is it now that this, you know, over a million dollars is for housing being brought up? I know with Residents in Action, I have a lot of the same concerns that there was, you know, there's been all this talk, "Oh, they're doing a great job," you know, "the city manager, oh, thanks, Tasha, you're doing great work." But what I had heard, and it's basically what the one lady had said, that there was really one person that was, you know, on the scene, the boots person, you know, for food. You know, there was money for going for food. Residents in Action didn't know. It was Pierre Bormuth had, who had mentioned that, well, gee, they're, you know, these people are eligible for food stamps. You know, why are they budgeting ARPA money for food? So, Residents in Action just is not, I mean, it's just been a, you know, pulling the wool over people's eyes that, you know, they actually had the expertise. You know, they would have known something like that if they did. You know, it's more of a money grab than having the knowledge to actually know things. Their initial thing had two people listed is, and Tasha had talked about, oh, you know, we gotta, oh, I forget if she said a PhD or a doctor and someone else, and, you know, it turns out that allegedly they were on vacation, but they still haven't, you know, come back and done the work. So, I would hope this money doesn't go to sort of a con job like the Residents in Action thing. I haven't seen, with the money that's already been spent, I looked all over on the city's website. I did not see anything really about the only information of how the previous 720,000 and stuff was being spent, especially regarding Residents in Action I got through a FOIA. That shouldn't have to be done to get all the details on how the money's being spent. There's no mention of life ways, and a lot of the people that are allegedly homeless have either mental illness, they abuse drugs, or a combination. You know, it's been mentioned, like Mayor Mahoney's not here, I guess, so, you know, he mentioned a few days, or last Thursday during an interview, mentioned five people that had died, and, you know, TJ had mentioned five people that died. They didn't die because they're homeless. You know, maybe ODing on drugs and stuff. So, hopefully, we get the truth on things. I think life ways should have been, you know, I checked the long list of, you know, the CLC and other organizations, but I didn't see life ways. And I think life ways should have given feedback as far as, because with the homeless and low income and everything like that, mental illness, drug abuse, and things like that, you know, things they have expertise in is a big issue concerning this. So, those are my big concerns. So, but definitely no Residents in Action. Hopefully, they're out and maybe the Community Action Agency or other, you know, you know, not this, well, just a group of a few individuals that aren't even a organizer, a 501(c)(3) and stuff. So, those are my concerns. I know with Will, I agree with his concerns that the way this money is being spent and also equity, I don't think, you know, equity should be, you know, the main thing, even though I know that's probably what the case is. You know, all the money going to the South Side. Will mentioned the history during one comment. My council member this last meeting kind of made a comment like there was, there's never been money, you know, that's gone to the South Side. So, Jackson is a rust belt city. All over, you know, downtown's been fixed up pretty nice, but the rest of the city has sort of gone down or have issues. The rust belt city had, and this, you know, the John Willis with his urban renewal was Negro removal. You know, it's just BS. And so, you know, we got a couple of woke people that will vote for that, but that's one thing that, you know, I don't want to see equate. It should go to maybe who needs it the most. And then, for landlords, you know, that's, there's too much mention that it's like the landlords are the problem. So, I would like to see that, you know, taper down some and realizing that a lot of times tenants have their own problems. It's not just always landlords. So, I guess those are my concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the public hearing? Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. Housing is a very, very important issue, as you all know, and I want to go back a little bit and, you know, jog your memories that the city of Jackson tore down over 1,100 houses in the city. And right now, as evidenced by the numbers in your report, we have a housing shortage. There are 1,800 individuals, 1,854, I think, who are paying over 50% of their income in rent. And there's another 1,400 that are paying over 30% of their income in rent. So, we have a lot of individuals in this community who are financially unable to afford good housing. Now, I realize that the amount of money that we're discussing here isn't going to solve that whole problem. But I want people to think long term, and I want people to think that as housing gets built in the city and hopefully the haze as well, which might free up some other apartments in the city, that we have a plan for what happens. Like, for instance, as the South Side gets developed, hopefully the MLK-CIA corridor, if there becomes grocery stores and law offices and doctors' offices and other amenities there, it's going to be a place in town where property values are currently cheaper than other areas, and there's going to be development, which is, you know, partially what we're hoping for. But we'll also price out the people who are currently living there in these 1,500 apartments where they're paying over 50% of their rent, or the 1,300 where they're paying over 30%. So, I want you to think about these people as you develop your housing policy here in the city of Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling once, twice, third time for any comments on public hearing for the homeless ARP funds. Okay, at this time, if there are no comments, I will entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
Sum of support.
Been properly moved and supported. Are you ready for the vote? Me? Karen?
I didn't.
Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we will move on to item 6.3, to conduct a public hearing on the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application for the MLK Equity Equality Trail Project from the county's Kibbe Road Trail Interest to Weather Wax. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Sum of...
It's been properly moved and supported to open the public hearing on the State of Michigan Trust Fund Grant Application. Not showing me. Okay, motion passes six to zero. At this time, we will receive any comments on the public hearing for State of Michigan Trust Fund Grant Application. Are there any comments? Any comments? Last call. Then, seeing no interest, we will close the public hearing for the State of Michigan Trust Fund Grant Application.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to close the public hearing on the State of Michigan Trust Fund Grant Application. Okay. I didn't miss the resolution on any of the others, did I? It's just this one?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so the recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the MIDNR Trust Fund Grant Application. And the previous motion did pass six to zero. Sorry, I missed that.
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the Trust Fund Grant Application. Resolution has been adopted, six to zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number seven. Just a reminder, speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing council. Each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions. Each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties. Use obscene language while addressing the city council or engaging in disruptive or disorderly behavior during council meeting. Should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor, vice mayor, may declare the speaker out of order. If a speaker is declared out of order by the vice mayor and refused to cease and disliss, dissess the disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor, vice mayor, may order the person removed from the meeting. Each speaker may speak once under public comments and may not yield their time to others. So at this time, I will start with Jessica Henry.
Jessica Henry, Spring Arbor, Michigan. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, honorable council members. Today, I'm here just to talk about support of the Fair Chance Housing Bill that will be dropping in April statewide, so nation outside. I am the manager of engagement and Mid-Michigan Regional Coordinator with Nation Outside. Today, I'm just going to discuss a little bit about the ordinance. So Fair Chance Housing was passed here in Jackson in 2021. And what Fair Chance Housing does, it prohibits landlords from asking potential tenants about their conviction history during the initial screening process. It postpones any background check until a conditional lease is offered. It prevents landlords from unfairly denying applicants housing solely based on their criminal history unless that record would impact public safety, property, or other tenants adversely. And it allows potential tenants to offer evidence of rehabilitation prior to final denial by the landlord. So over 2 million people in Michigan have a criminal record and, as a result, face barriers to employment, food, and shelter. Nearly 45,000 laws and statutes face people returning home from prison that exclude them from access to basic life necessities. While efforts are being made by state and local reformers to address barriers to employment, people with records often struggle to find safe and affordable housing. The result is that formerly incarcerated people often accept living in dangerous, dilapidated, and yet overpriced housing, or become homeless. In fact, recent research has shown that formerly incarcerated people are 10 times more likely to experience homelessness than the general population. In other research, 79% of the study's participants were denied housing based on their own or a family member's conviction history. The Fair Chance Housing Ordinance seeks to expand housing opportunities for people with records who have served their time and are seeking to provide for themselves and their families. This is important because stable and safe housing leads to reduced recidivism and increased public safety. When formerly incarcerated people have access to secure housing, they are more likely to be employed. And communities are more stable and economically viable when people have access to housing, jobs, and education. So I thank you guys for listening to me today, and I know there were some other housing issues discussed today, but housing is one of our most basic needs, and just to be in support of a Fair Chance Housing statewide push could make some great changes for not only our incarcerated populations, but their families and our communities as well. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Our next is Kentello.
How's everybody doing? My name is Kentello. I'm from 111 South Burn. I'm here to speak on Fair Chance Housing as well. So home is much more than a place. Home is where we live. Home holds the memories to time spent with friends and family. It's a place where we yearn to go and end the day, end of a hard day and long to return to after a long road trip. But for over 2 million Michiganders, home is elusive. People with records oft, often struggle to find safe and affordable housing. The result, the result is that justice impacted people are often accepted in living, in living in dangerous, dilapidated, and yet overpriced housing, or become homeless. 63% of Michigan landlords indicate that criminal records were a factor in denying tendency. The Fair Chance Housing, the Fair Chance Housing seeks to expand housing opportunities for people with records who have served their time and are seeking to provide for themselves and their families. Now, me personally, I did 21 years. I went to prison at 16. I've been home three years now. So for me personally coming home and anybody that I know, like, I did 21 years, the whole time, I'd never heard not one person ever say they don't want to go home, right? So when they come home, or when they get released, not everybody has a home. Now, I understand homelessness did not kill them people, but it also didn't help them neither. So if you want these individuals that are returning home from prison to become successful, home, a place to lay their head and feel safe is the most concrete thing you can do to help these individuals succeed in life. Thank you.
Roy Martin, 1020 Cypress Drive. And I'm just here to speak on fair housing as well. Now, I've done two prison, prison stints. And prior to 2021, coming, 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 coming home from prison, I mean, we're getting out, as, as the man said, you don't, you don't have no home to come to. And it was, it was, it was terrible. It was, it was times where trying to get a home, I, I was coming to a point where why should I say I've, 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 I've done some things that I'm not proud of and I'm a felon? But I didn't do that. But as I said, but, but 2020, as of 2021, I, I respect the fact that this city, you know, passed, passed that. So it gives a, it gives a person coming home from, from prison a, a chance to do better in society because, for one thing, if, if you come, if you leave there and don't have a home to come to, how can you look for stable employment or, or be productive in any kind of way? So I, so what I'm asking is for the city of Jackson to support this, this thing statewide. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber McKee. I'm the board chair for my place. We're on South Blackstone Street. And as we just talked about, potential homelessness and fair housing, I just wanted to make sure that the city council was aware of our nonprofit operating in the city of Jackson. So my place is a rental living space for youth 16 to 21 who may be leaving the foster care system, aging out of that system, or are in the care of the state but don't have a foster placement, or they may be couch surfing. We receive referrals from the Interface Shelter, from the Aware Shelter, from Jackson High. Our home has been open for two years. We've served over 16 young women out of our home, and we, we surround them in support services. Our home is staffed 24/7. So we also just recently opened my bakery, which is a business that is there to provide trauma-informed youth center business, to provide employment skills and trade training for the same group of young adults, and to help with economic stability and vocational stability. And our board, our executive director is actually working on a plan right now for a home for young men in the Jackson area. So it'd be that same population of young people 16 to 21 who may be homeless. And just to touch a little bit on what Jess talked about, too, we have, we've had residents that judges have allowed to come to our home rather than go to the youth center. And we've had young people come to the home directly from the youth center as an opportunity for them to be placed. So I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that, those resources available in our community for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Bormuth.
Next meeting, we're just going to chair right there for you, Peter.
Sorry. I'm going to switch the subject. I'm in support with all of you. But I want to talk about the recent power outages in the city and consumers' energy and the fact that we have this major public utility in our community, and it is responsible for all these power lines. But rather than investing in its system, it spends money on election campaigns to elect people who want to put Christian morals into our government. It spends money, you know, on large executive salaries. It spends money, you know, on court cases against the city. It spends no money now for its water out at its plant, the Jackson Generating Station, because it left the city system and it went to Eagle, formerly the DEQ, and said, can we have a permit to take 5 million gallons a day? Actually, the permit is for 7.5 million, but they say they're only going to operate using 5 million or less. 5 million gallons of water a day out of your aquifer, and they're not paying a penny for it so that they can prolong the life of this plant, which is generating electricity. And apparently now the water, our water, water is life. You know, our water is worth more than that electricity. So they went and decided to get that water for free. And I hope everybody's just aware of that, that this company has been a major polluter of air and water in the state of Michigan for, you know, 80, 90 years. They are the 38th largest emitter of greenhouse gas in the country. I don't remember their rank in terms of water. They shut down a couple coal plants, so, and a couple other polluting plants. So I think they're, they're about the 100th, somewhere around 100, 115 maybe, largest polluter of water in the United States. So this company left all the people in this community without power for four, five, six days, and then they gave updates saying, oh, well, we'll turn your power on tomorrow. And then, oh, no, it'll be 4 o'clock the next day. Oh, no. So people couldn't even plan. People couldn't even say, oh, I'm going to get a hotel room for this period of time. So I just want everybody to think about consumers' energy.
Next, we have Roger Malford.
My name is Roger Malford. That's 5696 Shady Oak Lane, Jackson. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you again on ethnogenics and what's happening in the state. Ferndale, Oakland County, just passed an ethnogenics decrim ordinance, just like Ann Arbor, Ferndale, Ann Arbor, Hazel Park, and Detroit have. So there are four now that have decrimmed it across the board, two of which the prosecuting attorneys in the county have said, don't bring me any more cases. We've never had any cases. We never had a problem with it. Leave it alone. I've been watching this, and as many of you know that I was involved with medical marijuana when it first came about, and how quick, how quickly ethnogenics is moving, much faster than what medical marijuana did. When I first started out with this, you know, Leoni Township held the first medical marijuana clinic. We had a physician in the township hall. And, and now they're doing pretty well with it because they've been forward-thinking and moving forward. So I would like to see Jackson to move into that realm a little quicker than what you did with marijuana. Michigan just sent out payments for the excise tax to all the municipalities across Michigan. Ann Arbor got $1.4 million. Lansing got $1.1 million. Battle Creek got $580,000. Coldwater, $415,000. Leoni got $518,000. I live in Leoni Township. I'm glad they got that money. Jackson, $51,000. One-tenth of what our little neighbor next to us got, $51,000. If Jackson had jumped on it a little earlier, you may have gotten that money to you and your tax dollars. So hopefully that you're going to move forward with this. And people are looking and talking about it all the time. Prince Harry's new book that he has out, it's number one seller across, everybody's reading it, into there. He talks about using mushrooms to help him get refocused and think through his position and what's happening and, and for him personally. Everybody's talking about doing microdosing. It's not, you know, my fear, as I've mentioned before, is people going to the street saying, hey, I want to get some MDMA, I would like to get mushrooms, getting a capsule and not knowing what's in them. And that's a real fear. So we need to decrim it so people can get together, talk about it, find safe sources for it so they can use it to help with their depressions and things. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Nancy Thorpe.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Thorpe, 2355 Maple Grove Road, Jackson, Michigan. That address again is Jackson, Michigan. For 45 years, my husband and I have lived in Jackson. Our children were born in Jackson. We were raised, our family, in Jackson. Every letter sent and all mail received had the address, Jackson, Michigan. We've attended concerts and movies in Jackson. We dine in Jackson's restaurants, cafes, and coffee shops. We attend events in this city, craft shows, car shows. We visit Jackson's attractions and museums. We've enjoyed weddings and we've mourned at funerals in Jackson. We spend our money and we live in Jackson, Michigan. I spoke at the last council, or the February 7th council meeting concerning Keisha Hamilton and the stain her racial slurs have put on Jackson. And I was stunned by the comments of the council prior to the close of the meeting. Rather than to take into consideration community members' concerns in that they took time to prepare comments and face the fear of speaking publicly for this council, the council chose to demean and belittle those speakers. Mayor Mahoney, who I wish he was here tonight, but he's not, made some very snide and disparaging comments like, well, they probably don't even live in the city, and just devalued their opinions. And the people that don't live in the city limits but still have a Jackson address, they spend their money here, they support Jackson. Councilman Fourgrades, your arrogant comments pertaining to how they researched and prepared their comments is beneath your position as a council member. You, you belittled them. You've repeatedly defended Ms. Hamilton's comments citing context and nuance. Well, this is a quote from her interview on the Lions Den. When she was given the opportunity to explain her comments, she emphatically replied, I meant exactly what I said. Case closed. You can try to spin nuance on it or context, but Ms. Hamilton's quite articulate, and she said exactly what she meant to say. When her comments went from the local news to the national news and then international news, it didn't just tarnish Jackson Public Schools. It didn't just taint people that live in Jackson City proper. She sullied the honor, the character, and the image of Jackson, all of Jackson, people that live on the outskirts. that live on the outskirts, everybody. Thank you for your time.[603.35][603.35](applause)
Next, we have Kate, is that Brown?
My name is Kate Brown. My address is 1620 East Michigan Avenue. Two weeks ago, I spoke to the council and shared how psilocybin mushrooms, also known as magic mushrooms, have helped me personally and significantly improved the quality of my life. I would like to come and speak with you guys again, just requesting, you know, the adoption of a city ordinance. I'd like to remind the council that psilocybin mushrooms have been proven effective in treating things like post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, treatment-resistant depression, obsessive-compulsive disorder, addiction, postpartum depression, and even things like tinnitus. Detroit, Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County have all decriminalized entheogenic substances within the last month. Hazel Park and Ferndale have passed unanimous ballot resolutions within their city councils adopting or decriminalizing entheogenic substances. I said the last time that I spoke here, it is not a matter of if, but when psilocybin and other things will be allowed in the city of Jackson and throughout the state. On March 17th, we are hosting a meeting with the Decriminalize Nature Michigan Chapter at The Seed Cellar in Jackson. I would like to encourage all of you and everybody in the audience to come and kind of hear what's moving forward as far as the statewide ballot initiatives and what we're going to start working on in Jackson to get it on the November ballot if the council chooses not to proceed forward with a resolution on their own. If the state does choose to adopt a statewide ballot resolution, we feel like it provides less equitable access for people to get those different types of things. And, you know, Jackson is a community that has a lot of residents that are in need of healing, and we feel like it would be, you know, a definite benefit to the community to adopt an early resolution for them. Mr. Malfort pointed out the financial aspect that Jackson missed out on when medical marijuana moved forward. We're confident that the statewide ballot initiative will lead to some sort of medical proposal similar to that. So again, we're just asking Jackson to be on the forefront of this opportunity. Again, we're having a meeting with the Decriminalize Nature MI or Michigan on March 17th at 6:00 PM at The Seed Cellar if anybody would like to come or like more information, or if you guys have questions that you can't ask us during this forum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[773.18][773.18](applause) Next, we have Melissa Hempstone.
Good evening, council members and vice mayor. My name is Melissa Hempstone. I'm a homeowner who resides in the city of Jackson at 716 West High Street. I've lived in the city for 30 years. I have owned and maintained my home and the entirety of my property for 15 years. I live in a historic subdivision formerly owned by the Morgan Estate, and anyone who knows the history of Jackson is familiar with that name. I'm not here to give a history lesson, but I want to say I've been paying attention to community development in the city, which is equally important as maintaining the integrity of our historic neighborhoods, and that's why I'm here today. I sent an email last week to all city council members with my concerns for the forced replat of the subdivision, which is occurring in my neighborhood that I learned of in September of last year. The replat of the subdivision has resulted in the closure of vehicle access to my property and my garage in October of last year. I share this access with a neighbor to the west of me, and our garages were built based on the subdivision plat as it is officially recorded at the Jackson County Register of Deeds since 1916. A neighbor to the north of us made it known in September that they are working with a community development city official, and they were informed by the community development city official that they would work with them and the Department of Public Works to remove the curb cuts and replace them in a location 16 feet to the south. My neighbors and I rely on the access as this is our only means of access to our properties, and we oppose of the replat. I hold the deed to my property, and my deed specifically references the alley, and the neighbor's deed to the north does not have any reference to the alley whatsoever because they have their own driveway. I have not sold my property to any of my neighbors. The neighbor has not been informed, I'm sorry, the neighbor has not been informed by any official, I'm sorry, the neighborhood and I have not been informed by any city official of a replat of the subdivision, and we oppose of the replat of the subdivision. The neighbor to the north of us has not obtained any building permits, yet has torn down the boundary line fence, installed a second driveway.
Mrs., I'm sorry.
Yes.
You have met your three-minute time frame.
Matter of minutes?
Yes.
Or one minute? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Is a limit.
Okay. I would appreciate the council looking into enforcing codes in my subdivision. Thank you. I'm confident it will be addressed accordingly.
Thank you.[1001.01][1001.01](applause) Next, we have Sheila, is it Everett's?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sheila Everett, and I'm the executive director of Greater Jackson Habitat. And I'm here today, we have property over on Mason Street that we would like to do an equal trade with some property over on Bates. So we've done some great work here in the city in partnership with them, have the homes on Delanne Franklin right now. And the property over on Bates is a little bit bigger parcel, but there is a lot of low land and really can only accommodate one home. And we would like to do a home for a veteran there. We've got support from Habitat Michigan and the Veteran Fund to hopefully start in September and have a really big kickoff, and I would like to have the council's support for that equal trade. Thank you.
You're welcome.[1070.08][1070.08](applause) John C. King.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, John King, 203 Third Street here in the city. Consumer's energy doesn't have Christian morals. They worship the almighty dollar, and it's like they fly the rainbow flag. So, you know, Christian values, they don't worship that. Jacob Bent, in a sense, your last meeting responded to me about the no mo Monday, or no mo me. He said grass dies if the temperature goes down to 28. Well, if you think about it, if all the, you know, all the grass would have died already this year, and it would just been dirt. It's just really silly of him. So again, with no me Monday, hopefully change your mind and get rid of that. He was talking with the DPW director out there, kind of cornered him, and, you know, eventually went on a tour of a plant and stuff. Now, with the committees and commissions are sort of like the council, they're not supposed to be giving directions to city employees, and so that's something that he needs to take into consideration. Also, Mayor Mahoney last Thursday in the Lions Den mentioned that he talks with Chief Hitt and kind of mentioned, he told Chief Hitt, oh, let's do this. The charter specifically prohibits that, so unfortunately Mayor Mahoney's not here. Hopefully, you know, he's watching this and knows he's not supposed to do that. For the elections, the city clerk was on JTV and mentioned that to adjust to the even years, that the terms for the first time would be increased by a year. The mayor would go to three years, but when the charter passed, that wasn't the case. It would be, at one point, the mayor would be like just a one-year term to get it to even years. And then the council members, it would be three years, not five years. So hopefully you get that corrected. Speaking of the city clerk, you know, I looked at her mask, you know, I finally, you know, looked it up, and I guess it's like the African-American, you know, I've seen Marcus Garvey created and stuff like that. So, you know, it would be nicer if she had like the American flag or the, you know, the great one she had. Joe Biden mentioned a soldier getting the Medal of Honor, that it was racism and him not being awarded it, but there's white in everything that have the same situation. So it's just the race that I keep complaining about that's being used. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you.[1289.21][1289.21](applause) Dan Greer.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor Robinson, council members, city staff, and fellow citizens. I'm Daniel Greer, 810 Loomis Street, former chairman of the Charter Review Committee, which was appointed at the end of 2017 and began our work in 2018 to review the charter to look for any necessary proposed amendments. Our work was interrupted with some different factors, including COVID, and we wrapped up, and I was able to present the Charter Review Committee's recommendations to the city council via the Zoom meeting back in June of 2020. And as some of you were here then and some of you weren't, just wanted to come up to speak about the changing the election years from odd years to even years. That was a recommendation. It was one of the three final recommendations that the Charter Review Committee put forth for the council's consideration and whether or not to place that before the voters. It warms my heart to hear that you are now taking up one of those recommendations, again, to change from odd-year elections to even years. I believe while the committee has been dissolved, I think I would speak on my former fellow committee members' behalf and say that we're glad that you're taking this up. And actually, I would acknowledge Mr. King, who was an unofficial member of the committee because he was at every meeting, that the, he is correct on, our proposal did say that the mayor would serve a one-year term in order to get it to the even years. But I'm glad you're taking it up. I understand that we'll be coming back to the next meeting, so maybe I'll be back to speak on that. I certainly hope you would go ahead and make this change by resolution as the charter and state law allow you to do, rather than putting it before the voters. And thank you for all of your hard work, each and every one of you. I'm proud of my fellow citizens for coming out and speaking tonight, and see you soon. Thanks.[1458.51][1458.51](applause)
Hi, good evening, Nicholas Thurston, 410 Van Baron Street, Apartment B, Jackson, Michigan. I just want to reiterate what John C. King has said and the things he's been tracking with the nonprofit organizations in Jackson. He is 100% right that a lot of disaster or emergency relief funding is being abused by them. It is being used for political lobbying, as you see in the last, I don't know, six months or so. A lot of people are abusing their jobs. They're greatly overstepping the boundaries of the nonprofit status that they're supposed to represent, and it does place those agencies in jeopardy of losing their 501(c)(3) licensing by constantly lobbying the city council. So those things should be noted. And Will Forgrave, you are wrong for supporting Keisha Hamilton and what she said, 100%. No question about it. I would never, I'm a black person, I would never support what she said, and I'm really disappointed to see how you've been treating people. So with that said, thank you very much.[1545.47][1545.47](applause)
And is it Jeannie Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't write anything up, but at the last meeting, we were all speaking out against Keisha Hamilton and her racist remarks, white women are the stupidest, et cetera. We've gone over this many times. So I was making phone calls to Wayne County last month and talked to many people there, and one man said, wow, such unnecessary racism. I guess these black women are not fans of Dr. Luther, Dr. Luther King Jr. I wasn't aware Jackson, Michigan was so racist. I said, Jackson isn't racist. There are us, there is no place for this hatred, especially from someone on the school board. He said, nice to know. I always had a high respect for Jackson, Michigan. She is tainting our city. But besides that, when another lady spoke out about Keisha not even being here to defend herself and what happened at the high school and the shooting threat, he informed me that his principal, because it happened across the state, that his principal sent him an email saying that it was a exercise. That wasn't conveyed to anybody in Jackson County. Their kids were told, and everybody was told, that there really was somebody that called in for a shooting at Jackson High. So I would just, I'm just sick of the lies. I'm sick of the, you know, false news that is being put out there, and thank you very much.[1705.35][1705.35](applause)
Okay, that concludes our citizen comments. We will now move on to item eight on the agenda, petitions and communications from city staff and other governmental entities. We will review these and place them one by one, accept and place on file. Item 8, one, City of Jackson, Michigan's financial statement as of and for the seven months ending January 31st, 2023. I'll entertain the motion.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to accept and place on file the Michigan financial statement for the seven months ending January 31st. Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, we'll tally and vote. Motion carries 6 to 0. We'll move on to item two, environmental commission minutes for January 18, 2023 meeting. Approved minutes for January 18, 2023 meetings of the environmental commission.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? Tally and vote. Motion carries six to zero. That brings us to item nine, the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Consent calendar is accepted. Six to zero. Other business. Item 10. City homeless efforts winter shel- sheltering of the unhoused. She is here.
Yeah, I just received the report yesterday, um, from our contractor and, uh, didn't get a chance to pass along to you. And we'll make sure it's included and added to this, um, agenda packet and passed along to all council members.
Okay.
Ready for public review.
Okay.
But hearing nothing in the in-between last few weeks from residents in action, I believe they're continuing to operate well.
Thank you, Ben. Do you?
Highlights from the report?
Yeah.
Glad I pulled it up. Okay. Well, um, I'll say that, um, as you know, the, the scope of the project was for 25, I'll reiterate that, 25 unique individuals or family members over a 13 to 14-week period. People are still self, we surpassed that number in three days. I've shared that with you before. People are still, um, self-disclosing that they are homeless every day. And where we are with numbers, we have a total of 285 inquiries that are, um, on our list. 204 of those inquiries remain on the waiting list. We have, um, helped 72, well, we've helped more than 72. 72 unique individuals or families to date have been, um, helped specifically with hotel placement. Um, so we've tripled what was originally in the scope. And we currently have 30 unique individuals and families who are currently placed in the hotels. Um, and that's totaling approximately about 60 people. Oops. There's, uh, we have, we do, um, dinner at least once a day, um, through the week. And, um, we have specifically at Travelodge, we have anywhere from three to 10 people who we are not actively paying hotel rooms or expenses for that show up for dinner. So they, um, people are hungry and they show up and we feed them. If we have food left over from what we fixed, uh, for the dinner at Travelodge, we'll drive around to different hotspots in town and we'll hand, um, that food out to, whether it's pizzas or whatever has been prepared. As far as, I, I will report that we had a birth. So we had, uh, took in a, a, a mom who was seven months pregnant. And, um, she had her baby, so, um, we did have a birth, so we're celebrating life. And, um, we are, I, I think the biggest thing is the cliff that I was talking about is, um, quickly approaching, uh, right now with, uh, with what we've already reallocated people. The checkout date will, at the latest, will be on the 15th. Um, so I know that we have, um, some flexibility is, um, within that budget to still move things around. So, um, we will work with, um, Jonathan and Corey to, um, potentially move some of the supply and food budget. And I would, speaking to the specific, um, expenses that we've had, I probably should have calculated, but probably 95% of what has been spent to date has been hotel fees. Even though we, um, had, I mean, we had allocated, I think, $40,000 originally for the food budget and then $20,000, I believe, um, for the supplies budget. So through donations and whatnot, we've not used as much of the food budget. And that will be what we move, um, reallocate dollars from that budget to, um, more housing or, or more hotel, um, dollars. We are, um, in the process of planning the event, uh, to, uh, connect people who we haven't been able to help, that's just kind of sitting on my Excel sheet. And we can't help. Um, we're planning a housing event and we have 32 vendors, I think, who have committed. And we're, I was hoping to have solidified that date, um, to share with you guys tonight, but, um, I have to wait until the morning for the venue. So it, it, we're hoping for it to either be on the 30th of March or the 6th of April. And the intent of that is to have the organizations and agencies who offer support services, who do assessments, who have resources for the homeless, or just people who, the people who are on our list, because we're gonna, we're gonna call them and specifically invite them to this event. We have the Secretary of State Mobile Unit coming to, um, help with IDs and whatever other resources the community has. So I encourage anybody, if you know anybody who offers services that may be of help, please contact me so that you can be onsite at that event. This is a transient population and we need to meet them where they are. I also want to just say that, um, there's this thing called social determinants of health. And basically what that means is the factors in your life, whether it's environment or your socioeconomic status or your living arrangements or lack thereof, that all impacts your life, right? Hi, I mean, there, studies show that the higher stress, um, even stress that occurs in childhood has impact, negative impacts on your health when you get older. It's called the adverse, um, childhood, um, aces. The, and, thank you, thank you. And, um, so although, like homelessness, just homelessness by itself may not kill you. It may kill you if you're out in the elements and, and, um, you have freeze, you know, you're out in freezing temperatures. But just the stress level of not knowing where you're going to sleep at night, not knowing what you're gonna eat each day, that can kill you. Okay, so, uh, let's be clear on that. That studies show that it can and it does every day. Some of the other successes is, um, I think we actually have five, probably should have confirmed that number, um, five people who have actually, uh, moved into stable, permanent, long-term housing. Um, we were able to, um, either support them in a hotel until that day came up or we actually helped them fill out their applications. The other thing that I want to say, yes, there has been some behavioral, um, health or mental health issues, but that is not, I mean, that does, that's, uh, I think people make assumptions about this population. We have people from, uh, all walks of life, um, who, I mean, like, we have some addiction, we have some behavioral health, but we also have just families who are struggling. We have working, poor families, people who are working, actively working, but they just don't have stable housing. And then we also have, I have to, uh, tag on to what some of the comments were with the, um, um, demolishment of homes and not having that parallel, um, strategy to build up. So there's a whole bunch of different factors, um, so. I, if, when you guys read the report, if you have questions for me, um, please let me know. I will also say that we got a complaint at the last meeting. I did, um, meet with a person who, um, had an issue with some of the diets. I, um, also will say, she, she wasn't one that was part of the program where we're actually paying for the hotels, but she was a person who, um, actively came to eat, um, because we make food available. We have made some changes, um, as applicable to add more, um, uh, fruits and vegetables, I guess, to the meals. But I also polled, um, the people who are actually in the program who were paying the rooms for and said, "Do you, do you, um, we have, this is kind of a balancing act. We want to keep you in the hotels as long as we can, um, but we may need to take from the food budget." Like, "What would you want?" And every one of them said unanimously that, you know, a lot of them now have SNAP benefits because we help them apply for those benefits. And they understand that the food that we supply is a supplement, not their sole source of food. So they're okay with us taking from the food budget and putting that and applying it towards the hotel line item budget, so.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Oh, you have.
Um, the food that you're providing, is it like homemade stuff or where's that?
Some, sometimes, so.
Do you have to go through the health department or anything like that?
So, um, Davida's a licensed caterer.
Oh, is she?
Yeah. People have many talents, for sure.
Yeah, that is for sure. And then is she, are you guys, uh, working hand-in-hand with TTI or CAA to, to make sure that they are homeless and that they're getting the reference services?
So we have not so much with TTI. Um, I do have Shante's number and we're gonna, um, definitely, um, we hope that they will be onsite for the event. But, um, CAA definitely, we have created verification letters or certification letter, homeless verification letters, um, and they're doing assessments and placing people on the section or having them go through that process for the Section 8, um, voucher process. But those vouchers are no good if we don't have, um, housing. So that's where we are with that.
And then, um, I know you're busy because I, that, that's a big project that you're dealing with. However, I am concerned about not getting the reports in a timely fashion because the constituents want to have time to see it and they don't get it and they can't comment for two more weeks now. So I really do think it's important to get it in at least a couple, two or three days prior to council so that the community can see the numbers and stuff.
Okay.
Um, and then one last thing is, I'm sure you're learning a lot. I know I've learned a lot about homelessness since I've been on council and, and I don't pretend to know, uh, hardly any of it. Would you be kind enough to give us a wrap-up, um, like what was a success? And what would you do different type of report?
In, in the final report, absolutely, yeah. And I, I guess, speaking on the report, and I did say this early on in the report, for a 14-week project to have eight reports, that, that's just, that's administratively, that's a lot. And when you look at the reports, you see that it's not just a one-pager with, I mean, there's a lot of data that we are collecting and have to continually scrub. So, uh, that will definitely be one of the recommendations in the final report that it's, I don't know, it, that's a lot, eight reports. And for, for, uh, we have, like, Michigan Endowment Fund, or we had got a $500,000 grant with them and we don't report that often in, of, in a two-year period, so.
Yeah, I think most of the people are maybe not concerned about so much the num, the number of people or the statistics that you're very, very good at. But where are the dollars going and what do we have left? I think that, I, that's at least what I'm hearing, the concerns.
Yeah.
So maybe the reports can kind of focus that, if that helps.
Okay. Thank you, Tasha.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are now moving to new business. Item 11 on the agenda.
Before you move, what's the status of the ballot?
They're hopefully timed to get here, they're supposed to be at T. Wilson's, so we're strategically trying to put them off until we can acquire that property so they have to be moved more than once.
Oh, so is there, um,
Yeah, a holding, a holding pattern.
Because of us, but not because of them?
No, not because of them at all.
Okay. Um, 11.1, East Pike Gallery Contract Amendment Two. Are we ready, council? You don't care if I read the whole thing? Okay. We are approving Amendment Two to the Engineering and Project Administration. East Pike Gallery Improvement Contract with Fishback of Lansing, Michigan, at a not-to-exceed $187,000, um, and authorization for the city manager and Director of Public Works to sign the appropriate documents.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Moving to item 11.2, Myrtle Lift Station Contract Amendment Number Two. Approve Amendment Two to the Engineering and Project Administra- Administration. Myrtle Street Lift Station Upgrade Contract with Fishback of Lansing, Michigan, at a not-to-exceed cost of $209,000 and authorization for the city manager and director of public works to sign the appropriate document.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote, Madam Clerk.
Freddie, you sure you don't have a comment?
What was that?
I was just talking to Freddie.
Oh.
He's smirking over there.
Okay, that takes us to item 11.3, City-Owned H4HH Slash, oh, you don't have that, that's right. Mine? Gary? Didn't register, I'm moving too fast, trying to get you out. Oh, okay.
Was that on the left?
Yes.
Yeah.
The lift station. Motion passes six to zero. And we're moving on to item 11.3, City-Owned H4HH/MSHDA, MISTHA, and Ground Maintenance Mowing Contract Renewal for 2023.
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Been moved and seconded, are there any questions?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes.
So with this, uh, with the, I think I asked, but we no longer be doing these long contracts, are we?
Uh, well.
Tell me what you told me.
I can't, I can't promise you that, but what I'd like to do with this contract, this being the last year for it, would be to, next year, break this up into smaller contracts, with maybe different, have the staff think of some creative ideas that maybe we can, um, do some things to encourage smaller companies, people who may have not, um, be able to handle the capacity of hundreds of properties at once and get them a chance to get a city contract and grow their business. So that's my plan for next year. Think of some creative ways we can do that. Think of some creative ways we can do that.
Maybe you should go to Tasha's. Be an employer there.
We, all, of course.
The answer, you're all set. Freddie? Any other comments, council? Okay. Madam Clerk, move tally. Oh, it's on my screen now. All right, motion passes six to zero. Um, item 11.4, Private Lot Mowing Contract Extension for 2023 Season. Extend it to the private, private mowing lot season to the lowest qualified bidder to enforce toxic weed ordinance.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Nancy.
Yes, I have a question. I guess, um, trying to understand how they go about doing this. I know we have the little measuring stick, but are they measuring just a certain part of the yard that they see? It's not that the whole yard doesn't need mowing, that they're just gonna mow that part, or?
So we ask our contractor, they have a measuring stick, it's, I think, made up by DPW, and we ask them, in order to justify being paid for it, that they send pictures. And they show clearly that the lawn is overgrown in multiple areas. There have been times where we have, uh, taken issue with the photos that were sent to us and the conditions of the property, and we do not charge the, the property owner, we do not pay the contractor for their work. So, and, and along those same lines, with everything, uh, since COVID, um, with our enforcement actions, we're looking to see compliance through knocking and talking, uh, before it gets to this point. But this is a critical program in the sense that, you know, uh, council members will call and say, hey, this property needs to be mowed. Uh, neighbors quite frequently are the ones who turn in other neighbors. Don't know how the city gets put involved in being the mediator of these things when it's simple walking over, knocking on the door and offering to help. We usually solve, solve things, but, um, that's what we're trying to do. And I heard you're gonna mow people's lawns this summer.
Yeah, I will be doing it. So, um, but we, is there like a notice, like a 24-hour, 40-hour notice? Or do they just mow it on that?
Not all the time, not all the time. I cannot promise you that.
Don't you publish something in the paper?
Yeah, we publish things in the paper and, of course, talking about it here is a good notification as well.
And if you're knocking, because we've had this conversation, a lot of people work and there are a lot of people who don't have the, um, the wherewithal to be able to afford a lawn mower or the gas that goes in the lawn mower, stuff like that, because they're working. It would really be nice for the city to consider changing some hours of the code enforcement so that they can knock on a door when those people are home after work.
Yep, we can consider that, and I know what a good thing we do is just leave a note, that helps.
And I know some people cannot read, so.
How do they get their house?
Good for them for getting their house with that disability problem.
I could probably ask a friend.
And, and the city's intimidating. I mean, there is, you intimidate me, Jonathan, just, I'm just very, but. Those notices are intimidating.
It's not, it's just a note.
I'm just telling, it's a bright, you know, it's a bright color, it's, it's intimidating. We have not locked in their shoes, so we have to try. Please, consider it.
Consider it.
Okay, any other comments? Madam Chair or Clerk, we'll take the vote. Motion passes six to zero. Brings us to item 11.5, Decertify a Street with MDOT. Um, approve a resolution to decertify McKay Street with the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Sorry.
You all jumping the gun today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Authorize it by the Vice Mayor and the Clerk.
So moved.
Now, if this, this is covering the resolution, or do we have to go back and do that? Okay.
I'll support it, anybody support it?
Uh, Laura did, did anyone second?
I know Laura moved, I thought there was a support.
Well, there is now.
Okay, it's moved and supported. Oh, there it is. Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Um, item 11.6, MDOT Contract Resolution for Brown Street. Resolution for approval of a contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for work on Brown Street from Morrell to Michigan Avenue.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, or concerns, council?
I think it's a great project.
Yeah.
I'm excited for that one.
Okay, Clerk, we'll take the tally.
Get my brain fixed.
It's a vote, I should say.
I'll just need to get the real fix.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11.7, Property Trade Between the City of Jackson and Habitat for Humanity. Approve the trade of city-owned residential property identified at 503 Bates to Habitat for Humanity for residential property owned by Habitat at 104 Mason and 102 West Mason, both West Mason.
So moved, support.
Been moved and sup, supported. Any questions, comments, or concerns? None, Madam Clerk? Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Uh, item 11.8, Letter of Intent for the Sale of City Property Owned at 971 Northwest Avenue. Approve the letter of intent from Lormax Stern to purchase city-owned property located at 971 Northwest Avenue and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to create the property transfer agreement.
Madam Vice Mayor, before there's an action taken on this, I have great news to share.
Uh-oh.
We, I received, uh, another letter of intent from another developer yesterday, or actually on Friday, and had a chance to talk with them yesterday. The letter of intent is for more than our established asking price, and there's some other details to it. My recommendation, based on that, my recommendation to you guys tonight would be to, um, authorize myself and the city attorney to engage both parties and, uh, look to seek a highest and best offer from both parties and come back at the March 21st meeting with the letter of intent.
So moved.
Support. Okay, it's been, is that changing?
Yeah, it is, it's completely changing.
Completely changing this.
So, so moved and supported, exactly what I just said.
Okay.
Always good when you get competing offers.
Do we want to know what they want to do with that property?
Do we know what they're going to do with that?
Uh, the, right, we don't know precisely, and that's what we'd like to round out with both parties.
Okay.
Is this the, as a result of Scott Fleming pounding the pavement?
It's, yes, never miss a chance to give Scott Fleming some, some accolades, and he works tremendously hard around economic, economic development in the city, and this is, um, 100% his work.
That's, is, that's, that's zoned as, that's commercial property, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, here are none, Madam Clerk, we'll take the, the vote. You're good. You updated that back there? Motion passes six to zero. Okay. That brings us down to item 12, which would be city council member comments. And I'm not gonna bounce around, I'm gonna do it the old way, I'm starting with you, Freddie. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you, Honorable Madam Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, I just, I know last meeting, I talked about, um, there's a meeting coming up, uh, the PAC Act, which involves veterans. The meeting is gonna be Thursday, the 16th, from 11:30 to 1:30. It's gonna be at the Jackson County Health Department on the first floor. So if you are a veteran, if you know any veterans who, I think it's geared more towards Gulf Desert Storm and who did that, but you're a Vietnam or Korean vet, uh, be sure to come out because they have people to bring, that come out. If you have your DD 2, DD 214 form, you can bring that with you. They have representatives there talking, um, have tables. So if you need to file a complaint, if you think you need to file a complaint, just come on and do that, dealing with anything from Agent Orange to burn pits. So it's a lot, a lot of information that will be given out. So again, if you're a veteran, if you know any vets, um, uh, you know, and their family who's able to get out, come to this and hear more about the PAC Act, what it is and what it can do for them. Uh, I appreciate if you can pass that along. Other than that, thank you and good night.
What's the time again, Freddie?
11:30 to 1:30. 11:30 to 13:30. Jackson County Health Department, first floor. March 16th. Not the 10, if you, um, if you think you're gonna have questions or do anything, you don't need that to, to a 10. Anything else?
Um, I do.
Oh, Lord.
No, I, I'm, uh, my uncle was a Korean vet, but I'm his overseer, so with, you know.
I, I guess, you know, I, I think that goes down to power of authority.
Well, I have that.
Oh, if you have that, you can come.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, as long as you have something, you know, that you represent.
I do, I have authority.
Yeah, if you have, you come represent, uh, and we can look at DD 214 later.
Thank you.
Anything, any other questions? Again, good night and go home.
Not yet. We're getting close.
Getting close, getting close.
Councilmember Gunn?
Um, I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Councilmember, why are you sweating?
First and foremost, I want to thank Jonathan for getting me a mouse. I'm old-fashioned, I don't like that little thing. So if anybody else wants a mouse, make sure to ask Jonathan.
I've got these.
Um, I had a constituent email me a question about the road proposal. It says, what would a property owner need to reject the narrowing of Lansing Ave? So can we get that schedule about what happens, public hearing? What are the steps, what are the next steps? So we, we could, then I can just forward it and don't have, you know. Uh, and it's road season, right? Winter and road season, it's Michigan. Um, and then the only other thing is the, um, Andre, I, I thought you were gonna put the polylocation, um, presentation on the packet on the online, so people can see it. Maybe you've done it since I wrote my note, but when I looked.
Yeah, it's all been done.
Is it, okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Brunel?
I'll keep it short, just for Freddie. Um, my, my only comment is, we have a Jackson Police Oversight Commission meeting coming up this Thursday at 6 o'clock here.
Councilwoman Brunel, that very well likely may be canceled.
Why?
Because we're missing two of our commissioners, so I'm waiting to hear a definite tomorrow morning.
Fine, okay, well.
No comment.
It may or may not exist. So I guess that was my comment, thanks. You stole my comment from me.
And it'll be updated on the website?
If it's canceled, yes, yeah, should know in the morning.
Um, Councilmember Forgrave?
Thank you. Um, I would just like to thank our DPW crews for, uh, working around the clock and diligently to pick up all the branches that fell after the ice storm and then immediately after that, turning around and plowing a foot of snow. So they were working pretty hard the last week, and I, I very much appreciate it, as a resident and as a council member. So thank you.
Thank you. Do I go first, or you?
You go first.
Oh. You would think I would, no, it, it's just different when you're sitting in the seat. You have to think about it, and I wasn't, didn't know a lot ahead of time, so it's like, whoa, I gotta do this now. But I, I really don't have much to say. I appreciate everyone's patience with, with me tonight. Um, I, I'm, I'm used to doing nonprofit group meetings, and so I, I find myself moving kind of fast, and we have different procedures here, but I appreciate your patience and everyone that came out tonight. I do want to, uh, give a special thank you to, of course, everyone here that, you know, we all kind of work together and we're, we're trying to make these things happen here in the city, uh, along with our nonprofits and supporters out there as well. But I do want to just, uh, give a big thank you to the people that assisted me at the, um, neighborhood meeting I had on February 28th. That staff, starting with the secretary for, uh, our, our city manager, our city manager for, uh, being there and supportive, um, for, um, you know, all those that came to the meeting and, and, uh, performed a step or two to go through the process for my, uh, residents in Ward One. But, and I know I was gonna start losing things, but it's just a big thank you to everyone for your support, the groups that came, the individuals that came, that some drove from Lansing, you know, nationwide. I think your gentleman, I know he's here, I remembered him, I do remember him. Um, but I didn't know if he was from town or out of town, but anyway, it, it really went well. Um, and we're speaking towards the Neighborhood Watch Group. And I do want to say that there is going to be a couple more meetings coming up. I don't think I heard anybody mention the 23rd, that's already scheduled, right? The 23rd is already?
It's on the March 30th.
March 30th?
Yeah, I know that, I was coming to that one, but on the 23rd, isn't, uh, there's another meeting scheduled at, uh, the King Center. I believe Shane's gonna be there, right, 23rd? King, at King Center, yeah, okay, I don't remember the time. And then on the 30th. 5:30, okay, on the 23rd, 5:30. MLK Center, am I correct? Yep, and then on the 30th, there's going to be another meeting at MLK Center, related to the Neighborhood Watch, Neighborhood Association, groups that, Diane Washington, the Y-Pop Group, and our GVI Coordinator, we will be all there, um, speaking with residents. And they filled out a survey during our, um, our last, my last ward meeting. So those surveys are being tallied, looked at to see what the community is looking for in a watch group. So we will be following up on, on the 30th at 6 o'clock, Diane? I have to pull my phone out, I put it in right away now because they're all kind of keeping me busy.
What's one on the 23rd, huh?
Uh, I think it's related to housing. Uh, I think it's related to housing. The 23rd.
I think that's the development of the South Side, Francis Martin Luther King Drive or something, that's what the mayor was saying.
Or is it Y, uh, MLK, what?
That's the Corridor Authority Meeting.
Yeah. Just fit those dates on your calendar, 5:30, Martin Luther King Center. I was putting something in and forgot to save it, so I hope I don't forget that one. I'll just add it, cause I don't know what it was. Okay, and that is all that I have. Miss Manager.
You run a great meeting, Madam Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Let's go home.
Okay.
So, so move.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
What was the move? I can't make motions.